Now, starting the October 3, 2024 Mount Pleasant Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Povidiak, will you take role?
Commissioner Devaney?
Here.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Here.
Commissioner Havelz?
Here.
Commissioner Honig?
Here.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Here.
Commissioner Leish?
Here.
Commissioner Ortman?
Here.
Commissioner Irwin?
Absent.
Commissioner Nicholas?
Absent.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the September 5, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is zoning Board of Appeals report. Commissioner Havelz?
Madam Chair, we did not meet.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is communications.
Madam Chair, we have received five communications for tonight's meeting. One was an invitation to the Southwest Association of Neighbors, the SWAN meeting, which happened on September 11th, and I was able to join. And four of them were in opposition of the rezoning of the corner of Crawford and Broomfield Roads, one of which came after the packet went out. So, we did print all five communications and hand them to the Planning Commission at the dais.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is public comment. This is only a public comment period for this meeting, so if anyone wishes to speak on any agenda items, or even beyond the agenda, that you should come forward at this time. I would just like to remind that, remind everyone that every person will have up to five minutes to speak, and that you should state your name and address. Also, you only get one opportunity to speak. Do not come back up after you have already spoken. So, if anyone would like to come up and speak, feel free to come up.
My name is Timothy Caldwell. My address is 1340 Glen Street in Mount Pleasant. Anything else I'm supposed to give you?
That is it.
Okay. I mean, you're talking about the financial effect that a private school will have on the Mount Pleasant public schools. First, the public schools. The city uses property taxes to cover a significant amount of the cost of operating and maintaining the schools. In addition, the state of Michigan contributes to public schools on a per-student basis. The state will provide $9,608 in the 24-25 school year, per student. The federal government provides a small amount as well. So, the major support of our public schools comes from property taxes and the per-student money of the state. Nonprofits are exempt from taxes, which includes property taxes. Resoning a property for nonprofit, for nonprofit private school will result in the loss of property taxes for the city, but the greater loss will be the state funding of the public schools. According to the documents the city has given to the Southwest Association of Neighbors, the supporters of the nonprofit academy hope to eventually have 200 students. Of course, it will take a number of years to build out the enrollment, but to illustrate the total loss to the community, or to the city, imagine the academy had enrolled 200 students this year. $9,608 multiplied by 200 equals $1,921,600 of funding from the state that would have been lost. It's likely some number of years for the academy will reach their enrollment goal of 200 students. However, every student who moves from the public to the private school represents a cumulative loss of state funds from Mount Pleasant public schools. Members of the planning board, as you fulfill your legal responsibilities, please keep in mind that a nonprofit school will come at the cost to the Mount Pleasant public schools. As you consider approving a benefit for the families of the few, please remember the families of the many. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up? If you would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Sorry about a little late. My name is Gisela Moffett, and I live at 1101 Watson Road. And I've lived there since 1965, and so I'm quite familiar with the history of events here in Mount Pleasant. Also, my husband and I are founding members of our neighborhood association, SWAN, you know, Southwest Association of Neighbors. And that was 25 years ago, or over 25 years ago, so, and it's still going strong. I've spoken about my concerns about the proposed rezoning before at different meetings, but not here with the Planning Commission. But I want to state again that among my biggest concerns are the increased traffic and attendant safety, and the eroding of our public schools. Now, first, Crawford, Preston, and Watson are already heavily used between 7:30 and 9 o'clock in the morning, like lunchtime, and then anytime after 4 o'clock, we can get out of our driveway because there is traffic coming from both sides. It was even worse when the bridge on Lincoln was out, and so all the traffic had to go through, and so we got an inkling of, of what it means here to use this as a shortcut or as the regular route. If you go through, if you go through with this proposal, Orchard Glen, which is a community with condos where mostly elderly people live, Orchard Glen will be the preferred route for people coming from the west side of Broomfield, as well as those coming from High Street and Watson, because they want to avoid the traffic light at the intersection of Crawford and Broomfield. And that includes the parents here who want to drop off their kids at the proposed school. They will probably want to avoid that, and so this presents a real safety issue here for elderly people in that community. And second, now, I oppose the construction of another school because it siphons off students from the public schools and monetary support per student. I think the city has an obligation to support our local schools instead of catering here to private interests. A couple of days ago, a friend of mine reminded me of what happened 30 years ago when the city, the hospital, and developers, and other powerful interests in Mount Pleasant bullied their way around zoning regulations on North Drive near the hospital. The hospital was blockbusting, buying residential homes to convert them to office buildings and parking spaces, even though the area was zoned residential. The planning commission went along with it. It was all done in secret, but word got out. A big crowd showed up at a planning commission meeting, but to no avail. A local lawyer would not take the neighbor's cause because he would lose most of his clients. It was a done deal, and my friend and most of his neighbors had to give up their homes and move. Ours is not the same situation as the hospital expansion, as you could argue that the expansion of the hospital would benefit all of the people in Mount Pleasant and towns nearby. But here, we have a parcel of land, which is probably one of the last big tracts of undeveloped land in the city. The idea behind the PRD was to help ensure that the development would be one that people would embrace and acknowledge as benefiting the entire city. It would be nice, in a small community, to find a use for this land that would benefit everybody, instead of creating distrust and anger between citizens and city governments. I urge you to reconsider the proposal and not cave in to pressures put upon you. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak, feel free to come to the podium.
My name is Renee Papalian, 1408 North Drive in Mount Pleasant. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'd like to address two issues concerning specifically the proposed private school that would be rezoned for that property. Two issues would be the educational option for migration, and the other issue would be whether or not a private school would be a threat to public school enrollment. Private schools are not necessarily a direct threat to a public school enrollment. As a former director of, as the former Director of Professional Education within the College of Education and Human Services at CMU, we assessed and evaluated the trends in enrollment of public education and overviewed the situation really were two main things that were causing significant students not enrolling in public schools. One was the absenteeism. The chronic absenteeism has nearly doubled since the pandemic, with some cities reporting over 40%. And the other would be funding issues, as was mentioned in the first speaker. Public schools do often struggle with funding tied to daily attendance numbers, which can be affected by the absenteeism and enrollment decisions. While private schools may compete with public school students to some extent, they are not necessarily a threat to public education. Public schools continue to serve the vast majority of students in the United States. However, the challenges facing public education, including the absenteeism and the funding issues, and the competition from other various school choices, do require attention and potential policy solutions to encourage their enrollment. Again, I just want to reiterate, the data doesn't support that private school would be a direct inherent threat to a public school. It is hard to assess as you're looking through data, because so many cities have so many other options. The other component I'd like to address is that educational option migration. People moving to communities with varied educational choices, often referred to as school or educational choice migration, is a trend influenced by various factors, including the availability of high-quality public schools, private schools, charter schools, and other educational options. I'd like to just briefly kind of review a little bit about that. Families often relocate to communities with more diverse educational options to ensure access to high-quality schools. This includes areas with top-notch public schools, a variety of private schools, or specialized programs such as magnet schools or charter schools as well. The data indicates that educational choices have a direct impact on the communities. I know last month I made reference to the educational migration, that it is a positive factor to communities. I also want to note that we have received contact from outside families who have inquired on whether or not the school has an opening date, and that that would be a direct reference to whether or not their decision might entail moving to our community. Just a couple of research notes on this, that the National Bureau of Economic Research study, the NBER, indicates that families are more likely to move to areas with greater school choice options when such, such options are available and well-publicized. And then the other piece of data I just want to refer to is the Urban Institute and Analysis of U.S. Census data reveals that families with school-aged children are more likely to move to communities with better educational options, contributing to the population and growth to those areas. So, we, we appreciate your support for this change. We believe that the school would be a great asset to the community. We know that having educational choices, charter schools, public schools, private schools, all of my background has been in education, and I support, you know, all of these options to allow a family to make the best choice, what they feel would be. for what they feel would be the option that they'd like to choose. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Marge Notstein. I live at 1361 South Crawford Street. And this is in reference to the southwest corner, Broomfield and Crawford. After a year of your commission planning, speaking with lawyers, meeting with the Central Christian Academy Board, discussing strategy with a surveyor, cajoling Central Michigan University, I know your minds are already made up. But when did you inform me of the radical zoning change to my neighborhood? Or inform the people in Orchard Glen, right across the street from the field in question? The SWAN board is not my legal representative. In reality, you never have informed me. Notices on my door handle that the vote already happened and a newspaper article are all I thought about this happening. I read Mr. Zhang, who was here a couple of weeks ago. It's deceitful, deceptive, and you didn't tell anyone because you know it was, and the Christian Board know it was deceitful also. When we moved here 40 years ago, most of the land southwest of our house was a field. And the northwest corner of Field and Crawford fulfilled that vision of the city's past planners. It has student housing, duplexes, condos, apartments, churches, single-family homes filled with people from childhood to elderly. It's an area we can trick-or-treat in. None of this would have been built if the city had been so short-sighted as to allow special interest groups to change that zoning. It could be an industrial park right now if it happened. And I thank those past planners. I thought long and hard how I could present these ideas about lost revenue and traffic and low numbers of buildable city lots and deceitfulness. And I'm sure when the Mount Pleasant schools chose where they built, they considered the busyness of the street. Vowles is on Watson, a dead-end street. The high school's on Elizabeth. Traffic is tame compared to Mission. When Gannard and Pullen were built, their streets were quite quiet streets. But the Central Academy wants to build on an already busy road and cause more congestion. Where have we seen that recently? Renaissance School. When parents pick up their kids, they begin to line up at 3 o'clock in the parking lot, but by 3:20, cars are sitting still in the right-hand lane of Isabella Road. Those turning left into the parking lot also cause a line up in the road. But that's being done in the left turn lane. The cars begin to leave and the exiting cars turn left or right, making more congestion. By about 3:50, most parents have left, but it's still few turning in and out. And that's on a four-lane road. But in the afternoon at Broomfield Road, cars are leaving the city and heading home. And as they drive through that corner traffic light, they speed up and they mentally say, "Ah, I'm out of the city." Until the five lanes are on, turn into two lanes, one going east, one going west. And some car in front of them wants to turn left, screeching tires. This is a school with set beginning and ending times. And they happen to coincide with the busiest times on Broomfield. This is not a subdivision or a business where cars can come and go all day long. It's a school, set times. A 200-person school, our planner wants to think only positively. So at least 200 schools, there will be, I'm sure, at least 100, 175 cars picking up and letting off those children. Consider where those cars are coming from. Every single school day, south, they use Crawford. East, they come through campus on Broomfield. West, they come on Broomfield. From the north, straight through my Crawford neighborhood, the 25 mile an hour speed limit is a joke. The stop sign where I live, nearly every time I'm out in my yard for any amount of time, one or two cars run through that stop sign. Christmas time when I'm putting up lights, always. Countless times, my husband has called the city and told them their flashing lights sign is flashing during the night and not the day. But our city planner told our group that a traffic study isn't necessary for any plans are made for new zoning and voting. And I think it's a most important thing to have done. Next, commercially, the west side of Mount Pleasant is much quieter than Mission Road corridor. High Street is a busy road, but even High Street on the west side has had a problem supporting a grocery store. It left. Businesses know that being close to the 127 X-Way funnels traffic toward their businesses. The west side beyond campus is suited to homes and subdivisions. Now you're wanting to give away 30 acres of taxable land for homes. Mount Pleasant is entrapped within townships with many buildable acres. Last week, I visited the vision for the Mission corridor here in this room. And you saw plans for building condos in what are presently parking lots. And you want to give away 30 acres off the tax roll forever. Forever. Future planners will not thank you. The church has so many places to build outside the city on a less busy road. And looking at a map, it looks like they still have vacant land behind their parking lot. Why don't they build there and share the parking lot and leave room for a line of cars inside on their own property? This vacant land is not an eyesore, it's a field. Let it wait for houses to be built. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I'm John Zhang, 623 Hopkins. I agree with some of the things she said, particularly about the notices and the response, not only to the SWAN neighborhood, but was in the paper where there were considerable amount of inaccuracies related to the public notices. Those all didn't occur, as indicated. There's so many things I'd like to bring up, but one of the things for the Planning Commission to keep in mind is when there's a new section of area that needs to be rezoned, which is the end of the PRD, there are some requirements under the master plan and the zoning. To try to get around this, they've put all these things together. The CMU property, the corner lot, which really wasn't originally part of the PRD, and the others, combined them all together to get 157 acres. Now, the good thing about what used to be there was this was going to be for housing, which is really what the city needs. Getting rid of most of the other land didn't help. But back to the problem, when you, the master plan is saying, if you're going to put a whole new group into zoning, it's like you can put 5 to 20% and zone it as civic. Well, we know that 54-plus acres are already schools, CMU. Now, we're pretending, to fool the public, that we're going to zone this differently. So if it ever gets sold, it'll be zoned. It's not for sale, it's not changed, it belongs to CMU. You cannot zone it. You cannot tell CMU what to do with that property. You can't do it. Yet, we're going to try to pretend, let the public know that we're going to rezone this so that we can get down to that 20% because the property that is going to be sold to this school is huge, huge. There's one thing to say, let's get some land so that we can have a school there because that school might be good, but not the volume of land that's there. I would say you need to look at the master plan and the zoning. Pretending that this CMU property is zoned something other than what it is is just deceitful. You need to say, if it's going to be a 20% limit, we're not going to have school or civic area more than that, then don't say we're going to put the CMU property as something else so that instead of being more than 50%, almost 60%, it's only going to be 20%. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Beebe. I live at 4875 Rivers Edge Trail in Mount Pleasant. I don't know much about property. I don't know much about zoning. I know a lot about taxes because we pay a ton of them. But what I can tell you is I know about children. And I raised four of my own and six foster kids. And two of my own went to public school and two of my own went to Christian school. My husband and I are one of the originators of Tri-Unity Christian School in Grand Rapids. Let me tell you, Tri-Unity Christian School is, put Wyoming, Michigan on the map because of their basketball stars. But that's not the main point. The point is, two of my kids could go very well in a public school. And a couple of them, especially one, was getting faded into the woodwork. She was getting bullied. She was getting in the wrong crowd. I had to have an option to either keep that kid home or have an alternative choice for me and my husband and my children so I wouldn't lose this one to corruption, to self-esteem destruction, to, you know. And right now, she works at Isabella County Courthouse. It doesn't hurt any of them to go to a different school. And all four of my kids are successful adults. But one thing is, you're going to pick up, the Christian school will pick up a whole bunch of homeschoolers because people don't have alternative here. All we have is Sacred Heart. And if you're not Catholic, we don't necessarily want our kids being indoctrinated with Catholicism. So we need a different choice for us, for our own homes that we're raising our kids. The way that some of the schools are, some of the things that are going on in the public school right now, you probably don't even know. You don't know what the curriculums are, you don't know what the... I have been there. I have been a part of the, it used to be called Seventh Grade Center, the junior high. And I was in the lunchroom a lot. Some of the bullying that goes on in those lunchrooms. If you walk by and a kid throws a sandwich at you, guess what? Nobody does anything. But if you're in a parochial school where they have some discipline and some laws that prevent you from being a bully, not that the public school doesn't, they don't want it. They try to have all kinds of programs. They don't want their kids to be bullies, but some kids can't fit into those school systems. And if you don't, if you don't have a kid in the public school here, you can't even go in those schools and check out their libraries and check out their books and check out what is being taught here. What is being taught? Do you know what's being taught? Have you researched what's going on? There's a lot of stuff that I wouldn't want my kids involved in. Now, my daughter, my oldest one, is a public school teacher. So I know what she's involved in and what she has to go through. I know that she taught for Novi Public School. And she was mandatory two-day conference of learning how to be a Muslim. Is that necessary for teachers? Is it? I mean, maybe where she is, but a mandatory law? That you've got to keep your job, you've got to go learn how to be a Muslim? I'm sorry, I don't buy it. And I just want to say that having a choice as a parent counts. And I'm for the children. I don't put a price tag on, you're going to lose $9,000 for one child. That one child's worth millions. And we can't base everything on dollars. We have to base things on wisdom. We have to base things on what we, our family units are trying to accomplish. And we're trying to accomplish families and homes. So you're going to have your homeschoolers come over. You'll probably have a lot of Sacred Heart kids come over because you can't go anyplace else except Sacred Heart, which is wonderful. It's one of the, it's, in my opinion, the best school here. But I think that you're not going to lose that much money. They're going to be right next to CMU or stay. They get their kindergarten, they're going to stay right through and go right over to CMU. And I had one son graduate from CMU. I just want to say, as a parent, please allow us to at least have a choice of where our children can go to school. And there's not a lot of land where people can go build a school in Mount Pleasant. There really isn't. And we're community. This isn't just one church doing this. This is like six or eight churches coming together. This is community, this is unity. So let's bring our community together and allow them to come together for the good of our own children. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
I'm Tom Notstein at 1361 South Crawford. And she just brought to my attention here that we're not against the school. We're only against the location and the promises that were given by the city. You know, we have had schools in this community fail. I substituted a few years ago Alton Maury and they had a very low enrollment and high teacher to a low number of students. And I think the low number of students caused the problem. They kind of failed. That building, I think, is being used to other uses now for schooling. Wasn't too long, we had a Baptist Academy over on the east side near the Renaissance School. And I don't know if it's still operating or not. I don't think so. And when we build a master plan, it seems like we should try our best to follow it because we may be doing something now or in the next few years with our infrastructure that follows the master plan. And then we get out there and say, oh, we're going to change our plans. So does that mean we spent too little money for the project? Or do we spend too, we're going to have to come back and spend more money to build something else? So that, I'm kind of confused, basically, on why we're in such a hurry to develop all the land that we have so it'll be built out in, you know, I'll say, a few years or in a decade. What's our career? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Beebe. My address is 2257 East Broomfield Road, which is approximately a quarter mile from the location that is being proposed. I first want to say I'm a parent that had three daughters that I put through parochial school. And the reason that I did that, we live in Bay City, Michigan, and we were seeing our public schools going down. The, it wasn't necessarily the money that was going into them. It was... I didn't want my kids getting involved with what I considered to be the wrong element. We looked for another option. In Bay City, we actually have, in the Bay City area, we have six, it's either five or six, different Lutheran schools that we can choose from. Each one of those schools struggles. We're part of Faith Lutheran. And Faith Lutheran is right by Myers on Wilder. We have approximately 15 acres. It's preschool through eighth grade. The 15 acres is just barely enough for the preschool through eighth grade. We would not have enough room to add the high school and the extra fields and things that would go along. and things that, that would go along with that. So the size of the parcel, we've heard about, actually, the size that they're looking at is probably close to what they're, they're going to need for not just the, the growth of the school itself, but the growth of the, the athletics and everything else that go along with the school. As far as this area being looked at for housing and the PRD being set up so that it was housing. I've been involved in that piece of property for over 25 years. I brought multiple housing developments that integrated everything from golf courses to condos, to duplexes, to low-income housing in sections of it. And it was turned down and defeated because a neighborhood group didn't think that that was appropriate. I'm sitting in the audience today, listening to the same group say, this property is supposed to be set aside for residential development. But that's what's been brought in the past. Those developers are now gone. Their money has left the area. And that's not an option right now. What we do have an option is to bring a school of choice in for parents like me. And I think that having that choice of being able to send your children where you want to, and I, I do agree, I don't know that I would have said it the same way as Mrs. Beebe, but it's a different Beebe, that, you know, I don't want my children indoctrinating into the Catholic faith, but it would be nice to have another option. So I hope that you continue the process that you're going down from a parent that was looking for those choices. I didn't move to this town. I've driven back and forth for 30 years because I had my children in the school that I wanted them in. I have one that is a vet and I have one that's in a doctorates program for physical therapy. They have, all three developed into wonderful adults. And I think that it was the base that they received, the base education. And thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Marjorie Brownson. I live at 1028 Clubhouse Drive. I have been employed at Community Church for almost 44 years. Just a point of clarification, Community Church is not building the school. There are four churches represented on the board. Community Church is not building the school, okay?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? Is there anyone online that would like to comment?
Yes, we do have one person on Zoom. Pat, please go ahead. Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pat Swick and I live at 1122 Country Way. And that is right in the hub of where this would be taking place, where the school would be built. And I'd really like to encourage the board to be, take a positive direction on this great opportunity for our Mount Pleasant community. At the last commissioner's meeting when the PRD was changed, one of the comments, based on Jim McBride's report, was providing options to help our city in positive growth. I'm involved with many different organizations and groups around, around the city. And I'm often asked about a Christian school and what the options are for, for schoolchildren, especially as we bring in new people into the community. And not having a, a Christian school in town is really a detriment, I think, to Mount Pleasant. But an even bigger point I raised, my husband and I raised four children and the options were very limited. And we started at the public schools and then the schools opted to reconfigure the way that the schools were set up. With four children, I had four children at four different schools at one point in time. And that's ridiculous to have to run around. And we tried to convince the, the school board, this was not a good move for anyone having two or more children. And that failed. And so we ended up having to take our children out to the Maury Charter School, which is way out in the country. Driving was terrible. And I understand the reasons why Maury failed. It's because it's not close to a city and easily accessible. And it was definitely a difficult drive, but it was a quality school, quality teachers. And it's very sad to see that that's no longer in existence. So would, if we would have the option of a school where all of our children could be together, which is good for the family, good for the community, it would have really helped us out a great deal. So our children have been at several different schools and eventually landed at Maury until we were really kind of forced as they downsized. But we could really use a school where we honor families that choose to have more than one or two kids and who choose to want to give a solid Christian foundation, spiritual, mental, physical, for our kiddos. And it's just short-sighted, I think, if we close down because people don't want more traffic. We can, we can adjust to that. And I think that it would be a great benefit to our community to have another option for schools in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else in person or online that would like to speak at this time?
I don't see anybody on Zoom with their raise hand feature. So let me see on email. I don't see any new emails for today.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone in person, so I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is new business, Mount Pleasant Housing Commission Housing Needs Update.
All right, thank you so much. I will invite to the podium at this time the Housing Commission Section Eight Coordinator, Amanda Brake. She will provide us with an update regarding housing needs in our community as relates to affordable housing. And the new challenges that she's going to be touching upon reflect state and federal changes regarding Section Eight vouchers, administration, and the ruling to ban a large affordable housing provider within the city limits. Thank you so much, Amanda. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Manuela. I'm actually technically here in my official capacity as the Region G Education and Communications Chair. So that's the MISH just a reconfiguration for eight counties going from Clare all the way to Bay. And so we're all working together to increase housing stock affordability as well as homeownership. And I get to report to all of you about what we're doing and how that's going. Just to kind of reiterate the fact that, of course, our population throughout the world is increasing. Our housing stock is not so much keeping up with those trends. Here in Mount Pleasant, our population is decreasing a bit. However, the need for housing assistance has not been decreasing, excuse me. State vouchers are currently on hold for the foreseeable future, meaning they will not be issuing any further vouchers. They also will not be taking anyone to add to their waitlist regardless of homelessness status. Emergency hotel vouchers is something that we often have in Isabella County. However, those will also not be available this winter to homeless families needing emergency assistance. Housing commissions throughout the state are in what's called a shortfall on their voucher spending. That means that they are over their budgets and are having a hard time issuing anything further because they're, the affordable rents are just not there for folks to be able to stay within the budget as well as find themselves housed. There are, I have been begging surrounding housing commissions for extra vouchers. I know there are a lot of developments that have come in front of you that are interested in building in Mount Pleasant. And one of MISH's requirements is that they have a dedicated percentage of those vouchers to project-based, which means directly to that specific building. And we, at this point, are at a loss. So it's very bleak. Usually I like to be the person that comes in and says, these are all the awesome things that we're doing in housing and be very positive about what our status is. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of good news for you tonight. Mount Pleasant Housing Commission has a total of 54 regular housing choice vouchers. There's a five-year wait for assistance on those vouchers. There is between a nine and 12-month wait for our public housing. We had 15 emergency housing vouchers awarded to us in '22. Those were all utilized and the government has decided we are no longer able to reissue those. So even if they were to flip, we wouldn't be able to have those available to new participants. I would like to address a comment that was made in a city council meeting a couple of weeks ago. The quote was that we need more luxury apartments because the affordable housing apartments that were built were difficult to fill. What I'd like to say about that is that there is a very different criteria for housing folks that are low-income. Folks that are evaluating low-income families need to be realistic about their qualification requirements. As the housing, excuse me, so Section Eight voucher coordinator here in Mount Pleasant, I can tell you that there are a few landlords that would love to take vouchers. However, their requirements are too steep for our participants. For example, there is a trailer park just north of town that has fantastic rental prices, but they require that the participants make three times, as far as their income, what the rent would be. Obviously, if you're a low-income family, that three times is not going to happen. It is difficult sometimes to get our folks housed, but we do have a wonderful set of landlords currently. Most of those landlords do have waitlists, just, just general waitlists for regular folks in our community. So finding housing is incredibly difficult for the majority of our folks here. When you're looking at lower-income housing, it's important that you make sure that you are being logical with your requirements for credit scores, that you're understanding that evictions happen oftentimes because the families can't afford the extravagant amount of rents for the majority of the apartments. I think that it's important that, moving forward, folks that are in charge of low-income apartments or lower rental priced apartments, consult with folks that have experience renting to these families. Affordable rents, when we talk about increasing our housing stock, do so many wonderful things for our community. Just a short list is that it creates longevity in the neighborhood so families are able to stay there for longer because they can afford to be there. This creates a strong community. Affordable rents increase the standard of health care for our families. If you have a stable housing environment, then you can start to look at the other things that are needed for the health and the safety of your family. And generally, when there's affordable housing, those families are able to get the doctor, go to the doctor on a regular basis. And their children show increased statistical, increased health benefits in affordable housing. It's important to remember that affordable housing also creates increased job stability. When folks are less worried about paying 50% to 60% of their income on housing, they are able to spend that money on things like tuning up the car, making sure that they've got tires. For the majority of Americans, I believe it's 40% of Americans actually qualify for some form of housing assistance. Those families are then able to keep their jobs when they can put tires on the car, when they can make sure that they've got gas in it. Affordable housing also increases, increases rather, health and eating habits as well as education. Again, families can focus on the things that are not just where their money is going, but how they can benefit their families as well. Affordable housing also increases local spending and local tax income. Families that are able to live in the communities that they work can then spend their money where they live. And there are a lot of studies that I'd be happy to pass on to you, but I didn't figure I would bore you with all my, my nerd literature. Selfishly, I want my kids to stay here. My oldest daughter actually bought a house in St. Louis because there was nothing here that was affordable for a young couple. So I think that when we're talking about our impact on increasing the population with our own children and with the folks that we want to bring in to, you know, do better, be better here in our community, our kids are also part of this perspective. And if we want them to be able to stay, they've got to have somewhere to stay and it's got to be within their budget. And I would just like to thank actually everyone that has spoke today as well as this board. This is probably one of the only communities that I don't hear a lot of NIMBYism, so not in my backyard because poor people you. So I'm very grateful to belong to this community. And I'm very grateful for the amount of support that the Housing Commission often receives. And my little plug for the tiny houses as well. I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
So for the nine to 12-month wait that you have, what do those people do in the meantime?
That's kind of the key question, isn't it? So that's the hardest part of my job. The majority of my job is fielding calls and emails where families are in crisis and they need something now. And I have nothing to give them. So my day-to-day is reaching out to any nonprofit agency, any other housing commission that I can access to say, this is little or no wait, let's get you on the list. Let's get you on as many lists as we possibly can. But unfortunately, there's not really a solution. We have a wonderful shelter here, but it has a very small maximum capacity. And, you know, an emergency shelter is not where we want our families to end up simply because they can't find affordable housing. And I have a list of about 10 housing commissions that I generally send, you know, all the folks that are like, I have an emergency situation. But, you know, four of those are in the UP. And everyone just looks at me like, I'm not moving to the UP. So it, it gets pretty rough sometimes.
Do you feel like there's enough housing stock here in our area?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
So it's not, not landlords aren't participating, it's just that there literally isn't enough stock?
It is not that the landlords are not participating. In fact, I work with 12 landlords on a regular basis. All of my vouchers are utilized. And I am very proud to say that I have really, I am grateful to be here in this community. Anyone else that I talk to that does vouchers cannot say the same thing. To be 100% utilized is crazy. And, you know, I actually, in addition to our regular vouchers, I have 12 other folks that have ported in from other housing commissions because we can find them housing. And the difference, one of the big reasons why we aren't in shortfall is that here in Mount Pleasant, while the incomes may be a bit lower for a lot of our folks, if we're talking about the normal, you know, average job that we have available, there are jobs, right? And so on other voucher programs, it's a lot more difficult to get folks in. Our job is to get them housing. And then once they've got housing, they have the ability to fill out applications because they've got a mailing address, you know? And so the, I would say there's, of all of the folks that I have, less than 1% don't have any form of income.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Regarding residential housing and the concept of just not, the affordability and the question of housing stock, what, from your perspective, is the reason that we're not developing more stock for affordable housing?
Well, I would say zoning is one of the most difficult things to get past when it comes to increasing any sort of housing stock. I was excited to see that in this plan that's been spoken about a lot today, that there were single-family homes. I don't have a single tenant. And in the four years that I've been doing the voucher program, I don't have anyone in a single-family home. Every one of my tenants is in an apartment. So to see that there were small, single-family homes was really exciting to me.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discuss a proposed rezoning of parcel 1700017300. zero 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 seventeen three hundred zero zero seventeen zero 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 seventeen three oh three zero zero seventeen zero 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 seventeen three oh four zero zero seventeen zero 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 seventeen three oh five zero zero and seventeen zero 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 seventeen three oh six zero zero. I'll refrain from reading the rest of the paragraph.
Did everyone get that?
Thank you so much for the introduction, Madam Chair. So this is the rezoning of five parcels located southwest of Crawford Broomfield. Here is a picture of the different parcels and the boundaries and zoning designations for this proposed rezoning. The meeting tonight is an introduction to this rezoning, so this is the very first step on the rezoning approval process. And the request for tonight is that the Planning Commission considers a public hearing on this issue at the November seventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. So I'm going to walk you through just some more technical slides. I know that I already talked a lot about this project in the previous meetings when we were going through the very first step, which was to see if the property owners in the City Planning Commission and City Commission were on board with the dissolution of the planning, the plan development agreement. So we got that done, so we can move forward with revising this application. So this is the simple chart with an overview for the proposal. As you know, we have around a hundred and fifty-seven acres in this area and the area is entirely zoned Plan Residential Development Agreement, sorry, Plan Residential Development. And I would just note, as you know, that four of the parcels were included in a PRD agreement from the two thousand that was voted to be terminated, except for one parcel, which is the parcel on the immediate corner of Broomfield and Crawford that is being proposed to be zoned for not only residential, but also to commercial or mixed-use buildings. The proposed zoning districts, as you know, is a combination of City Four residential only, City Four mixed use, and then Special District University and Civic Zone. The future land uses for the area is a mix of attached residential, residential or single-family homes and then mixed-use low, which is a combination of commercial and residential uses. The current land use is, we have the West Point Village as a multiple-family apartment complex on one of the sites and the rest is currently used as agriculture land. And I just want to note here that differently than previous efforts on this area of town, this is the first time that the rezoning is being a CD-led application. In the past, the planning commissions and city commissions were really engaging with, directly with property owners on this matter. And this time, because the planning department was approached in November of twenty twenty-three regarding the private school, I decided that I would take the whole a hundred and fifty-seven acres for a more all-encompassing rezoning as an effort to ensure that we do a kind of longer-term look at the property and that we are trying to match the parcels and the zoning designations with the current master plan and zoning ordinance requirements. So just to easily illustrate the area here is a zoning map of the existing designations. So all the parcels are highlighted in yellow with the PRD designation. And then you can see that the surrounding parcels include the Special District University Zone for Central Michigan on the east. And then on the north, you have a combination of City Four districts that allow for commercial and residential uses. The area where you have the hatch, which is the Orchard Glen Community, is just for residential. And then you do have a section that also allows for student housing, which is the kind of a chess mark hatch on the northeast corner of Broomfield and Crawford. And then we also have Special District Agriculture located immediately to the north. And this one neighborhood as CD three, CD three L onto the north. This is the proposed zoning map. As I mentioned before, the corner site would be the area that has, that will see the change from allowing not only residential, but also commercial. And then the other two parcels that deviate from the master plan is the Civic Zone parcel for the private school and the Special District University, which is a land currently already owned by Central Michigan University. Therefore, the plan here is to map SDU to match the other land also owned by CMU. This is the current view for Site seventeen three hundred, the West Point Village. There are multiple apartment buildings in this area that have a combination of one and two-bedroom apartments, but I believe most of them are two-bedroom apartments. And I believe that the, the really the target audience for this area is mostly students at this time. Seventeen three oh three, which is the corner site, is where this picture is taken. So this is a really small section of Broomfield that has four lanes with a center turning, medium lane, and then Crawford as one way with a center medium as well for the corner. This is a picture of seventeen three oh four. So this is where the city ends onto the west side of town. So the changing in the grass pattern here is basically the city limits. And this is where you would see the kind of entry point for the CMU property, which is, does not have a long frontage along Broomfield, but just a small section to ensure site access. And this is the final parcel located southern to the rezoning area seventeen three oh five, which is not currently owned as agriculture, but is just there as a native forest. Sorry, there is one more. This is the parcel seventeen three oh six for the, where the private school development wants to come in. So one thing about this rezoning application again is that it's a CD-led application. Technically speaking, when doing some research on previous rezoning efforts, I don't believe that the planning department has provided answers to the criteria, which is, are all included in the zoning ordinance. I decided, however, to include answers to the criteria to make sure that you have a greater picture of the rezoning that's in front of you today. So the first criteria in the master plan is that we need to ensure consistency with the goals, policies, and the future land use map of the master plan. The issue here is that, again, I mentioned that not all parcels comply directly with what the future land use map states for this area. So again, the Central Michigan University parcel and then the Civic Zone parcel. But I will mention again that one of the the part of the proposal is to also combine a zoning text amendment to the SDU CMU parcel to ensure that if the land is ever conveyed to somebody that is not Central Michigan, that that developer or property owner can provide housing onto that site. So this is kind of an incentive tool for CMU to sell the land, which could benefit CMU itself with the sale, but also make sure that we get more housing in our community. The other parcel is the school parcel. I did talk about some of the outcomes of providing another school choice here in the community. There were several folks that talked about in the public comment, also some comments and opposition about it, so I'm not going to extend too much on it. But just wanted to again remind you about the mismatch. And then the corner site is the one that would be in alignment with the master plan. This corner site was not included in the previous PRD agreement, so right now, at the moment, it is zoned PRD, but nothing can happen there unless the property owner would to engage on an agreement with the city. The master plan adopted mixed-use low as a land use designation in twenty twenty. Therefore, one of the main reasons to bring this rezoning forward is to make sure that we are aligning the zoning map with the master plan future land use, which was adopted by the entire community in twenty twenty. So aside from providing the more technical explanation, I also thought about answering to the second part of this criteria, which is consider if there were anything that changed since the adoption of the master plan. So I'm bringing here four different statistics for us to take a look at that could help inform the decision if we do need more housing or space in the community for more housing and if we should think about adding a private school into the community. So the first one is a new statistic that was brought forward to the Planning Commission and the City Commission a few months ago by progressive companies who provided an update about their latest demographic analysis that will be included in the master plan next year. So the finding is that we do have more than twelve thousand residents that are not living within the city limits, but do work here every day. So this is a great opportunity for the city of Mount Pleasant to provide housing choices that could attract those residents. The other trend that has been identified in the latest demographic analysis is that between the twenty twenty census and the twenty ten census, we did see an influx of family formation, long-term residents to our community, which means folks between the age of thirty and forty-five years old who needs, you know, more options for housing and then services geared towards the family population. Housing options like apartments do exist in abundance to students here in our community, but we do, we do hear a lot that we do not have enough options of missing middle housing to families and young professionals. So with the zoning designations that we are proposing here, we would be allowing under City Four that developers could come up with different, a mix of different types of housing, so single-family duplexes, small apartment buildings and so forth. The last one is a new statistics because I was interested in learning more about the population that could attend K-12 education. And it was alarming to me that when analyzing ACS data, I was able to see that we have over five thousand residents in Mount Pleasant that age between five and nineteen years old, but only fifteen hundred are currently enrolled in K-12 education within the city limits. So that means that we have students that are going outside of the city limits for education or that we have students that are currently being homeschooled. So I thought that I would share the statistics with you. The second criteria is regarding the compatibility to the site, physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features. So two quick tools that I utilize to pass, kind of just do a kind of a preliminary screening on the site is the EPA Environment Mapper and the Michigan Department of Environment Great Lakes and Energy Ride Mapper, which did screen for environmental contamination, leaking underground storage tank sites, underground storage tank facilities, and then air, water, and land contamination. So the site did not flag any issues that are of environmental concern. The, I would also note, kind of the first bullet points here is that one thing to remember is that while we did look at the PRD agreement from the two thousand regarding what are the uses that are currently allowed in this area, the use regulations that apply to any PRDs on site are the ones listed in the previous zoning ordinance. So not the today's twenty eighteen zoning ordinance, but this zoning ordinance refers back to the previous zoning ordinance, which means that it's not only residential, but also institutional uses that are currently permitted in the PRD area. So those include schools. All that to say that the proposal is not completely adding a different use when we're talking about a school development. The commercial uses would indeed be an additional use that's not currently allowed in the PRD designated areas in the city of Mount Pleasant. So that corner site would be able to be utilized as retail or services or anything that would classify as a low-intensity, low-impact commercial use. And last, I just wanted to clarify that the rezoning does not mean that we're going to see development coming all of a sudden, but it's just the framework or the rules that would apply to any development that takes place in the future, including the private school, which will be subject to site plan review, special in-use permits, development parcel plans, or any of the review procedures that we go through for any development, which will always allow the Planning Commission to request more information from applicants that could include an environmental impact statement in case we do have concerns regarding environmental impacts on the proposed site. The next criteria is regarding the compatibility of all potential uses allowed with the use designations with the surrounding uses. So because we do have several, I try to break this down between residential, civic, and commercial. So I already mentioned about the first topic that this a hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-seven acres are currently already allowing for residential and institutional uses. So I'm going to jump to the residential uses category. So first, I just wanted to say that, again, the CD four designation is the kind of more, it's called general urban character district, which allows for a mix of different residential uses, single-family duplex, missing middle housing. So just wanted to clarify that. And that around the site, we already have several developments that kind of match that variety of residential uses. So we have West Point Village, Aspen View Apartments, DeBrevato, which are apartment complexes. And then we have Orchard Glen condominium of attached residences and single-family residences as well. So this will be in alignment with those existing land uses. The proposed rezoning for parcel seventeen three oh four to the Special District University, as I mentioned, if the parcel is ever conveyed, CD three suburban character district regulations would apply to that site, which would allow for single-family and two-family dwellings, which is also in alignment with the current conditions. With civic uses, the Civic Zone site will continue to allow for civic, educational, and institutional uses. That is compatible with the surrounding context. We do have other civic zones in the surrounding area. And we do not anticipate impacts to the proposed private school development, at least in this rezoning phase, which is a very step back, first step to, to the school development. But because of all the concerns that I did hear in the past months regarding especially traffic, there was a discussion between the planning department, the city engineering, and the County Road Commission based on just the preliminary statistics that we received from the school board, that they would like to, in the long run, have approximately two hundred students and calculated approximately twenty-three staff. In that conversation, the County Road Commission did say that they do not anticipate the school development by itself requiring an enlargement or widening of Broomfield Road at that section. However, at the time of the site plan application, there could be small improvements that are required to ensure that traffic is slowly, you know, slowly reducing speed in order to not have rear-end accidents or other types of accidents at the entrance of the driveway. A few statistics that were important to mention regarding the school not triggering a widening is what we call the average daily traffic stats. So Broomfield's statistics is that we have less than eight thousand vehicles today, and that is the total for both lanes, eastbound and westbound. Therefore, it is under capacity even with the two school traffic added in. One way of comparing the, you know, being under capacity was provided by the city engineer that there are road diets that are being done out there when roads have less than fifteen thousand ADT. So this means that Broomfield could see basically the double capacity today as is without needing a widening. Crawford's statistics, north of Broomfield, which is the portion of Crawford that is under city's jurisdiction, has less than seventeen or seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety vehicles. That is also the total for both lanes, northbound and southbound, and is therefore under capacity because each lane has a capacity of fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred vehicles per hour. So that is way under capacity since seventeen ninety would be for the whole day. And then just again to talk about process, once the school is ready with a site plan, they will be coming to the Planning Commission for approval. And as part of the review process, on the backend, the city staff will make sure that we request the development to provide enough stacking within the property to not bring traffic onto Broomfield Road. And the County Road Commission is going to be part of that application in the same way that we bring the Michigan Department of Transportation when reviewing applications along Mission Street, East Pickard, or West High. With commercial uses, I just wanted to, again, state that this is an additional use. One thing to note here is that because of the mixed-use low designation for this corner, One thing to note here is that because of the mixed-use law designation for this corner, we're really talking about retail or services that would be at low intensity and are providing services to the immediate community. So anytime that we are reviewing, let's say, something larger like an auto-oriented use, that would be basically under a special use permit review, which requires us, staff and the Planning Commission, to look at the master plan and identify if that use is in compliance with the master plan. So one thing for us to note, you know, moving forward, is that we have that mixed-use-low-intensity classification to go by as we receive project or development proposals. Development projects will be reviewed, again, on a case-by-case basis. And one of the very positive outcomes of moving away from PRD and coming into hardline zoning is that, as you know really well, this zoning ordinance has a lot of regulations regarding design of sites. So that includes also infrastructure, block sizes through fair standards, and every single development that comes to place within this area is going to be required to build sidewalk facilities. That would finally make sure that we are filling those gaps as we currently have a sidewalk along West Point Village, but it ends nowhere, right? So once the other sites get developed, we're going to see that sidewalk being constructed and completing the neighborhood. So the next criteria is regarding capacity of city utilities. And here, I'm not the expert on it, so I did ask the Division of Public Works, who then just reiterated the process here. Anytime that we see a site plan, we're going to be engaging with the Division of Public Works as we do all different departments review the plans. And if there are any inefficiencies, the applicant is going to have to provide for that to make sure that we have enough infrastructure to service the new proposed uses. There's also a criteria regarding the demand for the types of uses permitted. So regarding residential and the school proposal, I tried to tackle that with the statistics in answer number one. The commercial uses for the corner site is something that, again, has been mapped in the master plan. But just in case there is any doubt regarding if that is a suitable use for that corner site, if the Planning Commission would ever want to question what was approved in the master plan, I thought of bringing at least a few quick statistics to be able to provide data to you all for your judgment. So one of them that I did have in my toolbox was the research that was done by Central Michigan University in 2022 about Mission Street vacancy rates. They range at around 20%. That is an overestimate of what Central Michigan observed in 2022, because it includes 3% of square footage or storefronts that were completely vacant, but it also included 17% of buildings that were just partially vacant. So that could be a mall that had one store empty and two open, or, you know, all of them, or, you know, 70% of them closed, or something like that. But it is the statistics that I had. And in order to provide a comparison, I did look at articles in the web. One of them is a Forbes article from the beginning of the year, which analyzed vacancy rates from very good markets or healthy markets in the United States. And those vacancy rates ranged from 13 to 27. So this statistics is just to provide you information because one of the comments in opposition received in communications was why we should allow more commercial uses if you already have a lot of vacancy. And I just wanted to note that vacancy rates that are healthy, in this case of this range, they do help open up options for more local businesses. If you have really low vacancy rates, property owners are controlling the price. And so it is harder for small businesses to open shop and have different options for where to locate. Last, the zoning ordinance does have a current framework that aims to advance more walkable neighborhoods for rezonings. So anytime there is a rezoning application, the zoning ordinance requires that we think about the concept of pedestrian sheds. This is a long way of saying that no rezoning this large should only include residential properties. It should try to create neighborhoods that provide for a wide range of uses, including commercial and services, so residents can easily walk to those services and do their groceries, go to the pharmacy, or anything that could help create a new neighborhood in this area of town. So the pedestrian shed that we are illustrating here gets this section of Broomfield that is already zoned for commercial development onto the north and northeast, and then stretches to the parcel that we would be allowing commercial uses as well within the rezoning area. And then, the other criteria was that the boundaries of the requested zoning are reasonable or in relationship to the surroundings. So we have a very simple application here. The zoning boundaries, they fall exactly where the tax parcels' boundaries are located today. And while the parcels are large, I just wanted to also remind all of you that we do have controls in the hardline zoning districts that we are amending this to that would control block sizes, lot occupation through fair standards to ensure that we are creating neighborhoods that are more walkable. And then, there's one criteria here regarding if staff, or, you know, in this case, the applicant, which is staff, if we did consider perhaps a zoning text amendment as opposed to a zoning map amendment. So one consideration that was given was with the civic zone designation for the school property. So basically, there were two ways that we could allow for a private school development, either through a map change to civic zone or through a zoning text amendment that could allow schools within CD3 zones. So if I were to proceed with the zoning text approach, we would propose to map the parcel CD3 with the allowance for a school development. The problem with that, or maybe starting with the pro, is that that would be directly in alignment with the zoning district designation that the master plan calls for. However, that would have implications elsewhere in our community, where we do have CD3 residential neighborhoods that would then be allowing for school developments as well, which is not how the zoning ordinance that was approved in 2018 is currently set up. We do have all existing schools mapped under CZ designation. So in order to be very transparent and make sure that we are in alignment with the current zoning framework, staff had decided to do an actual zoning map amendment to zone that site civic zone and go through the process. There is another criteria regarding making sure that we are not doing what we call spot zoning. So this is a combination of five parcels at a span of 157 acres, so that is not a spot zoning. And we also did not have any rezoning application that was submitted by property owners in the previous year, so we could proceed with this rezoning request at this time. And then just wanted to also inform you that I did provide in your packet some of the communications that went from the Planning Department out to the community as responses to questions increased from the Swan Neighborhood Meeting or emails that I've received afterwards, as well as formal Swan Letter response to the letter that they submitted to staff and the City Commission. There's also the applicant's or the school board response regarding their target audience for the school, in case there are questions about that, and then additional information about the resulting implications on the city's tax base. So this is where we are right now. I did not include all the work sessions that we've had since 2023, but I am putting here the meetings where the Planning Commission was asked to provide an opinion. So we started with the PRD dissolution because without an agreement to dissolve the PRD, I could not even move forward with the rezoning request. But just wanted to mention that we did get the Planning Commission and City Commission approvals for the PRD dissolution. And then, all signatures were collected between city and property owners. So we have a formal agreement in place that is just waiting for the rezoning to be voted in order to then see if that PRD dissolution is in fact going to exist, is going to be dissolved, or if we're going to go back to stack zero and not have the PRD dissolved. So here we are in the first step of the rezoning, at the introduction. And then, the request is that the Planning Commission set a public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning at the November 7, 2024, regular meeting. That concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. So on your answers to the rezoning review criteria in our packet, section four, in the civic uses area, you say that the city's review team will also request the school development to provide enough stacking room within the property to ensure that traffic does not back up within Broomfields right away. How does that process work? Is there a chart you guys use, or you measure traffic there and consider how many students may be there and how many cars you estimate? How does that work?
Yeah, so we do not have a precise stacking lane requirement like we do have for drive-throughs. So for drive-throughs, you know, we require 200 feet. In this case, we do not have standards for schools in the civic zone designation. So this will be a more discretionary review and action at part of the city staff and then the County Road Commission as well. So I would rely on my fellow engineers to make sure, you know, that we calculate that property. One thing to mention, and this is just because the Renaissance School was brought as a bad example, I guess, of traffic, is that even in the civic zone, we do require parking to be located behind the building. So one thing that I have been mentioning very clearly to the school board is that when they start engaging on a site plan, that the parking is going to have to be behind the building. So that could create a very, a very large opportunity for us to create a driveway that loops around the building and the parking lot and provides enough stacking for vehicles to come in, drop the student, and then come out. So that's one thing that I've been considering and kind of mentioning to the applicant, just so they can start thinking about it. But once we do have a conceptual plan or a draft in the pre-application meeting, that's when we're going to be likely talking about some of the calculations that you mentioned.
Okay. My second question was, in that same section, under commercial uses, for that section that can be zone commercial, one of the other options is low-intensity industrial uses. What would be an example of a low-industrial use?
So it's very limited. I was just quoting directly the chart that's already in the zoning ordinance and all the uses that we allow in CD4. So commercial kitchens is one of them, and then publishing establishments is the other one. So they're very minor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I will open up discussion.
I'll move to set a public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning at the November 7, 2024, regular meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda is discuss amendment to Table 154405A of the zoning ordinance as it relates to SDU University Special District rules and consider setting a public hearing on this issue at the November 7, 2024, regular meeting.
Already talked about this, so no need to repeat much, but this is going to be a text amendment that accompanies the rezoning. But I did put it as two separate actions for you to consider. So this one would be a zoning text amendment that was included in your packet already as a draft to ensure that if the land is ever conveyed, that CD3 regulations would apply.
Any questions? I will open up discussion.
I move to set a public hearing to consider the proposed amendment to Table 154405 of the zoning code at the November 7, 2024, regular meeting. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is staff report.
I have just three projects to report tonight. The first one is SPR 2418 for 1300 Is Pickard. It is installation of privacy fences at the back of O'Reilly's Auto Parts, one off the southeast corner of the building to the back wall and another between the dumpster and the wall behind the property. And the reason for them requesting this and receiving the approval is because they wanted to make sure that they were containing who can access that back part as apparently some folks that park at the ice cream shop next door were kind of going onto their site. So there was nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibited that. The fence complied with the rules, so staff approved the project. The next one is SPR 2419 for 311 East Bellows. This is for a new deck structure over an existing cement. So knowing previous surfaces were created. This was just a very simple application for a new deck structure. And because the parcel is not a single-family house, it had to come to the Planning Commission for approval. The last one is an update of a previously approved site plan, 24-06 for 116 North Mission. This is where you have a Graff Cadillac Buick. The request was to change the location of the previously proposed bike rack that was associated with their special use permit 2405 for the expansion on the northeast side of the building. And the change is the relocation of the bike rack that was going to be right in front of the building when you are driving along Mission because it was too close to the driveway. And they decided to move that bike rack to a safer location immediately adjacent to the pedestrian entrance on the south portion of the building. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Would anyone like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.